Hello and thank you so very much for joining me tonight. I go by Loon and Nate. And what I'm creating for you, for the collective today, could simply be a ASMR style video. You know, we could totally just keep it there. But for those of you who are open to the concept of energy work or simply brain candy, you know, things that basically lean a little metaphysical for sure, lean into the metaphysics, but support essentially like thinking in broader perspectives or finding practices, things that we can add to our day to day that support us, right? Even if it is a little woo. Um, what I'm creating then for in that regard, in that lane is an ASMR style energy work session with the theme of working with the physical body, the physical form. I've had a lot of requests for this. It hasn't necessarily been streamlined. It's been a bit all over the place. Some people asking me for something to do. Basically, I've been asked to create specific things and on my channel here, I can't exactly create, I don't feel called to create specific things, like I don't feel called to create something with the intention only for this issue, right? Like, but since I've had so many requests for uh, physical healing in general, pain relief, um, I've certainly done videos on vitality and other things, working with the physical before. But we're gonna have a little bit of a different playing field here today. We're gonna have a little bit of a different theme and hope that it supports you because it's something that I find that supports me very much in my real life. So whether you're experiencing cramps or migraine or nervous system issues or a disease of some kind or anything at all to do with the physical form, even if you're feeling fine in your body, but you want to add a practice to your life that supports um, like healthy body, you know, healthy cells, healthy body, um, efficient practices or efficient um, uh, patterns or like what the body is actually doing, making sure that everything is organized and if, I can even say like disciplined or focused. Alright, so sorry for the like the intro, but that's what we're gonna be working with today, alright? So let's get our candle. Have this cute little candle holder by, made by Reel. Actually, I think I had a misspelling in this before. I think it's R H E A L. I thought it was R H E A H, but this was an Etsy shop. And I like the sound of cement. I have this oil from Vala's Enchanted Perfumery. I love, love this shop. I put a lid on really tight. And I just wanna put four drops in here because we wanna be working with the physical and four to me is grounded and physical. Okay, so we have one, two, three, four in there. Additionally, I have some uh, red jasper pieces. And I just have some on my hand, just adding them to the candle here. Again, we're focused on the physical, so that's why I'm choosing red jasper. So on behalf of your and my and everyone else's, highest and greatest good and perfect comfort and alignment, our intention today is always of course to support relaxation, to support balancing, to support just getting a little break from the day and getting into a more comfortable energetic state, right? Healthy state of mind, healthy state of just peace within the body, right? But more specifically, our intention today is to communicate, to use the power of our minds to get our bodies, our cells, our bodily systems, our bodily functions back on track, you know? The body has a, it needs higher awareness, higher consciousness connection, subconscious connection. And it can be thrown out of whack through many different reasons, many different, be that emotional situations or um, disorganization of our own thoughts or disempowerment rather is a better way to say that, of our own thoughts and experiences. Of course, I speak to you with this physical intention as a form of holistic support. So I don't mean to say we're replacing something that we might need in the physical realm, right? But just to add, just to have another layer, another approach, another benefit, another way of working with this, with the body from this more subtle format or this other way of kind of connecting, you know what I mean? So if you have something with your body going on, with your bodily functions, with your physical, with physical pain or discomfort, anything at all, I'd ask you to just have a little look or have a look rather at this little flame and set an intention for yourself to transmute the discord and to realign the system, to get out of the way of healing and let the body do what it needs to do. Listen to the cues, to more effectively hear the cues that our body might be requesting, right? Acting on those needs. And if we may say overpowering the discord, stopping it where it is, overriding it, getting it back on track, getting it back into that aligned state. Alright, and if any of you are feeling okay, but you wanna utilize the session, you can simply tune into the, the concept or set an intention to work with your ability to communicate to your body, to communicate to the supercomputer, the super master programmer of the body and support it, you know? Support its healing, support its flexibility, support its vitality, its immunity. Alright, so hope that makes a little bit of sense. So of course, there are many healing modalities that exist. And it does sound quite silly, doesn't it, to think that we have the power to um, of mind over matter? And I'm taking this specifically from a book I read. It's almost like you would laugh at my face if I told you uh, we can change the physical reality with our mind, right? Like, I could like telekinesis, is that the right word? Um, like moving things with our minds or something? But hmm, I wouldn't make that claim anyway. But instead, a better way to look at this communication and this mind over matter is not mind over matter, but mind over mind. Mind over the mind of the cells or the organ or the function or the system. The mind of the heart, of the liver, of the spleen, of the kidneys, the mind of the cells. Mind of the blood, we could say. For example, in some vitality videos that I've done before, I've encouraged you to visualize seeing the white blood cells coming in and clearing up what needs to be cleared up. Similar practice to communicate to the discord and snap it back on track, you know? Say, hey, we're, we're getting a little derailed here. This isn't working. There's been some kind of misprogramming here. Let me communicate this to the mind of these cells or the system or the function. So to share with you some stones. This is a red jasper-ish stone. I think it's a mix of things. This was sent as a gift um, that my friend Andre probably found himself and polished. And I'm pretty sure it's a red jasper, but either way, it's, it's what I'm looking for in this session, that grounded energy. And here I have a blood stone. I'm so sorry, that's very difficult to see. But this is a blood stone from Monk and Moon. It's particularly pretty. And again, just like the vital force, the um, physical nature of these stones, right? I mean, yeah, they're physical. The associations is what I mean to say. So if you're working on your body in any way, red jasper, blood stone, it'd be really nice to support you. I had a comment recently, it was like, what's with the hands? ASMR is not visual. I'm like, then why do I, why can't I watch ASMR videos on mute and still get it? Alright, can you tell me that please? So. If you find a stone that even looks like the organ, like this kind of like a liver-esque look to it and you were trying to communicate to your liver, you could work with holding it, something that has a similar shape or just association to you, holding it in your empowered hand, for me, my right hand, I'm a righty, and communicating. Listen, liver, I know, I know in the past I've been a little rough with you, but I've been giving you what you need, we're doing that cleanse and I really need you to forget the past and let's move forward, let's have a fresh start and start processing, secreting, doing the things that livers do in your most aligned state, in your most empowered form as liver function, yes, like, and so it is. And communicate in that sense. Or, you know, blood stone is obviously kind of associated to blood, so for your ladies or individuals who deal with that. So just gonna place these around the candle here. I also brought out this cute little amethyst, drusie-ish, little part of a geode or something. And this reminds me of all the little cells that we're trying to talk to, right? Like all these little terminations, all these little points, you can use something like this to focus on all the cells in your body and how you wanna talk to them, tell them, look, we're off track. This is coming up, we're done with this. I like hold images, see your body functioning healthily, like comfortably, no inflammation, smooth, everything exactly the way it's supposed to be by, you know, the creators, divine blueprint, right? So using this to communicate, right? Like seeing all the cells, the minds, the cell minds that you want to program, reprogram, reboot. And I thought this was just nice and it's good for, kind of combing through, pardon? Combining through, relieving stress. You could use something like this to release that, um, pardon me again, that discord or that disease and brush it through. Maybe we'll do a little that in our session, but for now, I'm just gonna our crystals here. I have this apatite tower um, generator. Also from Monk and Moon, because you might have seen, I got a lot of stones from them recently. And I love the power of apatite, particularly the blue for that mental power, that mental influence that we're seeking here to connect with as we communicate to our bodies. And this is not a bullying situation, right? We're not like, body, you've been, you're doing this or that. It's not about that. It's like, listen, let's get a fresh start, okay? So we shouldn't be using this to talk down to ourselves or anything like that, of course. It's not at all what I mean in this session. It's more of, oh, let's get back on track, let's get back on track where we know we can be, even if it's things we've struggled with our entire lives. I've seen incredible things happen with friends of mine who have fibromyalgia, friends of mine who couldn't conceive or had trouble conceiving and now they're mamas. Like, I've seen such amazing things happen when we, well, there's a lot of healing involved in general, right? But miracles happen, let's just say that, okay? So apatite for that kind of um, little bit of dominance, little bit of mental dominance here. We're gonna, we're gonna use this. And the last stone that I brought out is nuumite. So it's like a very black stone with these little golden flecks of leproteresence. And this is very much for me about the void, the space between the cells, the um, how do I say this, dark matter between the cells, the ability to connect through the cosmos, but also down within into the more micro elements, right? Of the body and of the representations in the body. We have the zodiac throughout the body, Aries head, Pisces feet kind of thing, you know? There's so much that we can work with. So I wanted to bring this in for that more mystical kind of side of things. Connecting, visualizing the space between the cells, hearing our voice, our command echo through that void or that space and reaching every molecule, every atom, every organ. But any dark stone would work for this. I just love my nuumite. I have this cute little rattle from the rattlemaker on Etsy. Sean Walking Bear, he is a true artist and true healer, just amazing, amazing person if you're interested. And I'm gonna, do I need to turn it down? Do I? I think we'll be okay. This one's pretty gentle. We're just gonna focus and connect. I'm gonna set an intention to connect with you beyond time and space. And I'm going to use the rattles through the etheric form, through the etheric body and auric field to break up the discord, the disease, the um, the um, poor structures, the, oh, how do I say that? More better, how do I say them more better? The, the wires that are connecting, that like weren't meant to connect, you know what I mean? The triggers, the pathways, the um, unnecessary and uh, uncomfortable reactions that we may have in our body to certain things, where this is allergies for some or um, dietary things and like how the body can trigger stuff, right? So we're gonna work with this. We're gonna work with kind of breaking down, setting an intention to only break down to, so that we can process, so that we can release what does not support the complete and perfect function of the body and its design and of course, your free will, always including your own free will. But the intention here is not to disrupt anything that would be supportive, only, only what is keeping you in any distress, right? So I'm gonna start near the back of the head, near the zeal chakra. Because I wanna break up those patterns, the beliefs that this is what we just have to deal with. I'm gonna all focus on the back of the head here, around the skull, focusing on the chambers of the mind, like a, like a pyramid, entering the king's chamber, you know, and just gaining access to all these points, going up over the head now. And down through the eyes, so how we see ourselves, the images we hold, so third eye and physical eyes. Ears. The jaw down to the neck for that communication, inner thoughts, outer expression, breaking up, breaking down. Any thoughts or things we keep saying, like the ownership of discord, the ownership of anxiety, the ownership of, of these things, right? Like, oh, my asthma, you know, like I experience asthma, I don't need to own asthma. Does that make sense? Just let those go and now you will have to find healthier, forgive the term healthier here, I hope you know what I mean, but healthier ways of thinking, healthier ways of looking at the discord. Going down into the higher heart here, connecting with truth, your mission, your purpose, the lessons of this, the lessons of the discord, the lessons of the disease or, you know, bodily challenges we may have. Now heart chakras itself for this embodiment. Solar plexus area, but all around, right? Like all around the lower rib area. What are you taking into your ego? What have you accepted into your ego? Let's break up. Time to break up. This like scene from Queer Eye is popping in my head, where Jonathan was talking to somebody about his mustache and he's like, look, I love my mustache, but when it starts wearing me, it's gotta go. And I don't know why that popped in my head, but it's kind of similar, right? To how much we might attach to or how much we might take on through our character of our um, struggles. And I don't mean to say there's not a true um, importance and uh, forgive the words here, it's coming to me, but like it's important to share, it's important to connect, it's important to empathize and communicate to others who also share similar experiences. I don't mean that at all, but when you're really boil it down, when you really get to the core, we wanna make sure that it's not in the core, you know what I mean? It's part of the experience and yes, we can connect through that, but we don't want it as in our core of how we see ourselves, how we identify. Experience, not identification. So going all around this area, I feel it's very important to cover the space. Just breaking it up gently. Focusing down to the lower abdomen here, we're focused on breaking up that emotional connection, the emotional trigger to the body, you know? I'm gonna glide the messages of the body up because it is talking to us, it is sharing something. And if you have something going on, I highly suggest Googling metaphysical association, you know? I highly suggest Googling metaphysical association, whatever you're experiencing and see, does it, does it resonate, you know? Traumas, scars. They all can form this stuff, right? And I'm being so general here, right? But I hope you know what I'm saying. Okay, down to like the base of the torso, the tip of the torso here. Kind of down the inner thighs, pardon, respectful, but just inner thigh, inner knee, inner calf, down to the inner ankle, out the feet. Same on the other side, inner thigh, inner knee, inner calf, inner ankle. Down to the floor. I'm gonna go around the back, around the sides and back of these lower area of the body, of the torso, we're just breaking up any blockages, focusing on the body's physical abilities in terms of nutrients, release, receptivity, getting what it needs, releasing what it does not need. Alright, that feels good. Just do a little scan. Just scanning, see if anything comes up. Getting images, I'm trying to figure out, because I'm not, not feeling it here. I'm getting images of like tradition passed down. So let's just work with the crown and just work with an intention to move through. But if there's something in your family, like where you feel you have a genetic predisposition, I'm not arguing that that is right, how could I argue with that? But also, let's not take it on because of that from a mental aspect and let's communicate to our bodies, to our cells, et cetera, that we're our own person and whatever our family was dealing with before, be it, you know, a parent or, you know, more deeper than that, that let's work to dedicate, let's dedicate the healing of the issue from a, you know, more emotional or um, mental kind of perspective so that the body and the form can, can not have to deal with that processing. You seeing that, right? So that is our intention. We're just gonna call through. Move through and visualize the double helix from over the head. Foot sixteen inches over the head. A foot or sixteen inches or so is what I meant there. Moving through, down through the very center column. Again, just visualizing double helix, moving, shifting, healing, connecting. Severing connections, reforming new connections, all the way through the root, down, down, down. Past the root, past the feet, into the earth, the earth's our chakra. Bringing out this rosemary for a bit of medicinal kind of. How funny does that sound, but? So we just wanna set an intention here, bumping. We just wanna set an intention here, bumping into, I moved everything over a couple inches and bumping into everything, I'm so sorry. I can't help it. I have long, long arms, okay? Don't let it bother you. We're just gonna push this in. This rosemary for clarity, like, like, you know, when you wake up, you like kinda get yourself together, like, "Oh my god, I've been, I've been doing it this way?" Like, we wanna visualize the cells, the organs like that, like, "Oh my god, wait, where, where am I? Wait, let me get back on track, clarity finally." So we just want to send this intention of clarity to the cells, to the biorhythms, to the neur- neural connections, neurological connections, to the organs. Just receive this clarity, this wake up. If you have some rosemary, that would be lovely right now. Just gonna work through the form. And we're gonna channel through. Again, seeing that intention of clarity. Releasing the old thought patterns of the cells, right? Of the organs. And we're gonna use our little buddy here. And we're just gonna comb through like we're pulling out the dead hairs, right? Like we're sweeping up the broken fragments of the rattle work we just did. And really clearing it out completely from the energetic system. Sweeping it out like. And focus on the back of the head. Combing. These things. Sweeping up all that little debris, all the little broken down pieces. Down the neck. Shoulders. The back. The spine. Hips in the back. Back of the legs. Down the side. Arms. The third eye. Just swooping. The eyes. That throat. Oh, that throat. Just really combing it through. That's, I think, where we would do the most work, so um, this is a gimmick here, right? But like, I would suggest doing this video at least three times if you're really working on something just because of that throat. In fact, in Reiki rules, or in Reiki suggestions, twenty-one days would even be ideal, you know, like three weeks worth, but I don't wanna try to talk you into watching the same video twenty-one times. But I hope you know that there's a power in that. Dedication, commitment, and then things take time to reprogram, things can happen instantly. I've seen it, I've experienced it. But if you've really carved this pattern, if this pattern has been there, or this thought pattern is what I mean by that, has been there most of your life, the twenty-one days would be my suggestion, you know? And that goes for everything, not just this. Okay, solar plexus area. Just combing that identity, you know, that formed, now broken, but that pieces that we've taken into our identity. It's, I would never deny the experience, ever, ever, ever. But I also don't think it's what we should attach to, right? The experience is different than how we see ourselves. And what we own and take ownership of, and I don't mean responsibility for. I mean, that we allow into how, into our truths of who we are. Okay, just going down more. And more. And I think that feels pretty good. Just wanted to do a little kind of grabbing, moving. To pull out any. The intention is to pull out any lingering. More deeper rooted, or that need just like, just need a little direct attention. So, that appetite now, right? So I have some kind of telling you how important the throat, the expression, how we think about ourselves, the way we talk, the way we communicate, express this, of course. And I'm saying appetite for that, like dominance, like I want my mind to overpower the mind of these cells or to redirect them. I'm saying cells as like a blanket here, of course, right? But I wanna also focus on our minds. Because if our mind is not able to um, release those disempowering ways of expressing or thinking, then we're not really gonna be getting anywhere, right? It's not gonna be supportive. So let's first just hold intentions, and we're focused here, down. Just above the high heart, up through like the thyroid, I guess. And of course, the sun, and the space between. To channel, and channeling, I'm focused on channeling here, of course. To empower this space with new ways, more um, supportive, more productive, more empowered ways of thinking and expressing about our bodies, about our health, about everything, truly, right? But we're keeping this in the health realm and the bodily realm for now, for this. So I'm just gonna kind of send in this light, this string, this line, this channel, this piece, this empowered. I almost won't call it a fragment, this empowered um, string, like vocal cord, right? To support the way you express, the way you think, and I'm just more focused up here, so forgive my mouth not forming things correctly. Just allow yourself to receive here. Of course, my intention to only ever honor your free will and your divinity and your empowerment. I'm seeing some stuff, I just, it almost looks like shedded snake skin, like all rolled up in a ball. But it also kinda looks like um, I don't know what it's called, um, I've never, I think it's a food. Like I've seen it in like the meat section at the grocery store before as a kid and it was like white and weird to me. I'm sorry, not trying to make fun of it, but like, I remember seeing it and being like, "What, what the heck is that?" Just like discard, like something potentially discarded, like snake skin or something, okay? And that's good, it's good to discard what keeps us tight or keeps us small or that we're not needing. And of course, right, back to the previous function for this, our intention. I'm gonna move through and just empower now the concept of mind over mind. You think you can't influence someone's mind? You can, in good ways and in bad ways. And you can influence animals' minds, you can influence the mind of, of plants through communicating and saying like nasty stuff to them or that they're loved and beautiful and watch them grow, like, right? You know, so the, the mind of water, you, you influence, you are so influential. So let's take that back, right? Particularly of our sovereignty, our bodies are meatbags, you know? Dear meatbag, you, you talk to it, right? Don't let the media, don't let Dr. Google. Don't you, sometimes even doctors, like we need second opinions and things, right? Sorry if this looks boring to you, just really wanna channel that through. Just gonna take a little more of the oil here. Apply. Two, one, two, three, four. We're just gonna channel now. Oh my gosh, I wish you could smell this. It's very powerful oil, very, very, very powerful. Focus on channeling, you focus on receiving, while I focus on channeling. And just let these waves hit you. Focusing on your body's receptive and dominant characteristics, the movement, the flow. The dead cells release, new fresh cells are grown. The body's identification of knowing when to stop, knowing when to continue, knowing when we've had enough of this, so let's chill. You know, like in terms of autoimmune and stuff, right? And of course, I feel like I don't need to say this, but I will. I'm channeling through the whole session here, even through the vocal cords, I'm channeling. So, if you feel like you're only getting a little Reiki at the end, that's not the case, the healing sessions are the whole time together, yo, you know? I keep seeing geishas, like geisha images. Right, kind of fluff, seeing like a staff with like a cobra kind of head. We're gonna just split it around. All around, this thick cozy burrito. Energy burrito. Gosh, I love the smell, right? Alright, feels pretty good. Alright, well, I hope you enjoyed this successful hello earring. I hope you enjoyed this little session today, I hope it supports you and gives you something to think about. Thank you so much to those of you in the Patreon community, I can't tell you how grateful I am for your support. It is so um, saving, you know, like it's so helpful in these crazy times, thank you, thank you, thank you. Cannot thank you enough. Thank you to those, I've been so blessed and fortunate to work with for your Reiki training, it's such, it's my honor truly. Thank you so much for that. And to you, just allowing me to share a little piece of your past tonight, or maybe some other nights as well. I'm so grateful, truly. I, I can't say enough, thank you so much, everyone, for everything. Alright, from the very, very, very bottom of my heart, I bow to the divine, within you, within me, to this magic, this energy, this connection we share. Alright, so much love to you and namaste.